We pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag.
of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which is.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
John Malcolm, you're muted.
I don't say anything bad about you Chuck.
Okay, so. Any addition or deletions, Kristen?
This is Kristen, there's one addition, Mike Wesco is here this week and has gotten computer, everything sorted out. So Mike Wesco is here this week for appearances by local citizens and visitors. And that's the only addition. I'm unsure if any of the select board members had any other additions.
Nothing so far. Would you please introduce everyone?
Sure, so I will run through, this is Kristen Powers, assistant to the select board, and I'll go ahead and run through the participant list that we have here. Just as a friendly reminder to everyone, I see some new names this week, so welcome. And these meetings are recorded for Peg TV, so please be mindful of that. And before speaking, if you could please identify yourself. Also, all questions are to be directed to Chairman Mike Beecher. So members in attendance this evening, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Ed Cleveland, Chuck Whedon, and Bob Jones. We also have Jonas Rosenthal, John Sabatka, Ken Norman, Deb Hawkins, Jessica Van Ort, Keith Mason. I think we've got Ray and Beth perhaps, Frank Nelson, Mike Wesco, Jim Sheldon, Emma Cotton, and I believe that is all. Is there anybody who I forgot this evening?
Guess not. Okay, how about the approval of the minutes? Did anybody see anything with the minutes that they'd like to change? Kristen?
This is Kristen, just one quick thing, I forgot to put Julie Mack down on the attendance list, so one addition to the attendees or others in attendance.
Okay. Anybody else see anything? Somebody want to make a motion?
John will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved. Pre-requested appearances, Mike Wesco?
Yes, this is Mike Wesco speaking. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
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 Yes, sir.
I had some technical difficulties last meeting, and the one before that I was unavailable, so I got a little bit of catching up to do. Just with some of the unanswered questions from the November 18th meeting. One of them that was not answered was that in a April 2012 meeting, there was a question about the truck traffic on Kelly Hill Road, and it was stated that it was approved. Yet, I asked who it was that gave that approval. That question has not been answered. The other question that wasn't answered had to do with the database for the timekeeping of the highway department. The time cards that were sent to me have no information on them other than a timestamp, hours worked, whether there's holiday pay or overtime, sick leave. But there's no description of any of the activities. So I don't know whether that database that was supposed to be established back in 2016 actually happened, or is that not something that did take place? That question.
The database was established when Tim Muse Hughes was the Select Board Administrative Assistant. And after Kristen took over, the computer crashed, and we had to get a new computer, and we were never able to bring that back as part of our process.
Yeah.
We're working on it, but we haven't yet brought that back up to speed.
Is there any old information anywhere from that older database that crashed, or is that just gone?
No, because the computer crashed and everything was lost.
Okay, well, that's going to lead me into my next, I guess, more of a question is that obviously I'm looking for information concerning the repairs of Kelly Hill Road roughly a year ago, back in January of 2020, when the road fell apart right next to the gravel pit. With the information given, there's no way of me making any determination of what monies were spent or materials. I'm wondering if the Select Board can put together what it costs to take care of that portion of the road during that time when it fell apart. The only thing I could gather is that there's roughly between the employees listed from mid-January to end of January, there's in addition to regular hours, is about 40 hours of overtime. So it doesn't leave me with much information to discern what may have been spent both in labor and materials to repair that section of the road, which is the same section of the road that the overweight vehicle, unregistered, unlicensed overweight vehicle used several times to cross that area. And the only other question that wasn't answered from that same November 18th of this year meeting was the cost of a culvert replacement. Because in that section of road, there is a culvert that was crossed by that overweight vehicle. So those are the questions from that meeting that have not been answered yet. And in addition to that, after reviewing the overweight logs provided by the town, I don't see where any Rob Lee Farms equipment is listed, or Chet McClellan, the excavator who's working the pit. None of his vehicles are listed with the town. So I don't know how that's enforced, what the rules or regulations are. If somebody could fill me in on that, I would appreciate that as well. And then lastly, same subject matter, new item. And I see that Mr. Rosenthal, the zoning administrator, is present this evening. I've been in contact with him over the last six or eight weeks trying to determine if a supposed conditional use permit was ever issued to Rob Lee Farm Incorporated in 2008. It is not listed in the annual reports presented by the town. And Mr. Rosenthal has been unable to verify that there is a permit issued to the pit. So I was hoping that that could be answered for me as well. And it's kind of simple that either if there is a permit and it was issued, I'd like to see a copy of it. And if there's not, well, that's a different story, but I was hoping that the Select Board could look into that as well with the help of Mr. Rosenthal. And that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing that stuff to our attention. As far as is the permits on the trucking, I don't know that we've ever, we fill those permits out, but and then we've never had any violations against them or anything in my knowledge, so that's all I know of. There's a lot of trucks that go on that road that don't have those permits too. So we certainly can't just single out one.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of trucks that are permitted, and when you have an overweight vehicle that's in that kind of an excess. Was it mentioned?
There was no damage occurred. I mean, you said that this road got muddy, this road has got muddy every year that I've been on the Select Board, and it's on one of our shortlists to repair. So that's one of the issues with dirt roads, that we have to repair them, and we're working on a plan, and we have somewhere around half of the mileage of dirt roads in our town repaired with slate, and and they've turned out great, but we can only do a mile or two each year due to cost and et cetera. So that's it's one of the roads that we know we have an issue with, and we intend on getting to as soon as the money and the time permits.
So then the running of the overweight vehicle is permitted? The 120,000 pound truck on a 24,000 pound road is permitted?
If it's off-road truck, I don't know anything about that. That's really not anything that the Select Board can, has any jurisdiction over.
I sent a lengthy email at one point listing the statutes of Vermont, that I believe was forwarded to the town attorney. I believe Kristen, I believe Kristen copied me on it. I remember reading it. So I'm just wondering is if, you know, has there been any follow-through on it, or can anybody run a 120,000 pound truck up and down Kelly Hill Road at free will? Maybe the attorney could answer that for me.
Ray, Ray Ducat has a question?
Yeah, I do. Bob Jones, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Ray.
Bob, you're the official overweight permit man for Pollock, are you not?
That's correct.
Okay, so can you answer these questions, Bob?
At this point, I'm not sure that I have all the information, but I should be able to at some point answer the questions.
Well, maybe the question should be directed to Bob Jones. Instead of Mike Beecher.
Okay. No, I'm the chairman, I'll direct the question. The directions go to me. So Bob, do you have any input on that at this point?
At this point, I don't. I want to gather more information and make sure I have my facts straight.
Okay. Was there somewhere, someone said something about a culvert would be the cost of the culvert depending on the diameter and about a day's labor to install two men one day. So I'm not sure, depending on the going rate, the diameter of the culvert. I'm not familiar with that, but no damage was occurred to that culvert at this time. That's a that's just something you have just for reference, Mike?
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay, any more questions, Mike?
No, that's it. If you can get back to me with those questions, I relisted in the new ones concerning the conditional use permit. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Jonas, you have a comment?
Yes, response to Mike Wesco's question. So I've gone back to 2003. I don't see, if you go through the permit files where they have the years listed, I don't find anything in, well, from 2003 to current to 2020. Now, it may have its own separate file, I don't know, but there is reference in a correspondence that there was a permit. But, you know, I haven't found a separate file for that. So I just need to follow up with the person who wrote that letter. She's John, it's written by John Thrasher's wife, so I haven't contacted her. I don't have her email. Secondly, on overweight, over dimension vehicle permits, this is not my purview through the town of Pollock. But having experience with the town of Pollock for 31 years is that the Department of Motor Vehicle has a guide for a number of axles, length between the axles, and the weight of the vehicles. That makes a determination of what's legal and what's not legal. So the fact that the town gives an overweight, over dimension, over dimensional vehicle permit, you know, as long as they have, you know, some of that information when they submit those permits, but having said that, if you look at all the trucks that go through the town of Pollock, it's virtually impossible to stop each and every vehicle and to find out if they have received those permits. That's one of those things that the state has, and they request towns to issue those permits. And without any assistance from the Department of Motor Vehicles, the overweight division, I think they have nine vehicles statewide, at least they did when I was town manager. You know, 99% of the trucks that go through your town don't have permits. You know, so in order to enforce it, the town would either have to contract with, you know, someone in law enforcement to stop each and every vehicle to see if they have a permit. You know, we had a small fraction of the number of vehicles that went through the town that received permits. But again, they would provide the axle information and the differential of feet between the axle and all that other stuff. So it's a very complicated system. So that's all I have to say. So good luck with those permits.
Thank you.
Good luck, Bob.
Thank you for your input, Jonas.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll move on. Announcements, Kristen?
This is Kristen, no announcements from where I sit.
Okay, zoning administrators report?
A couple of things. So I believe last week, or the week before, I sent out some information, probably the week before, from Jeffrey Grovan representing Purham and Merrill Bent, some correspondents. So they have I forgot Mr. Purham's first name, but in any event, there's been a new permit application provided, which I'll probably schedule. I spoke to Keith Mason about scheduling the hearing. Let's see, what else? As I mentioned before, Mike Wesco had requested me to look up some information, which I cannot locate unless I speak to John Thrasher's wife, and I her name escapes me, but I have that correspondence on my desk at the town office. There's been one new permit issued. You have the information from Merrill Bent regarding the other ongoing situation, which seems to be working its way through the courts. The only other thing, oh, so yes, I sent out an email to to Mr. Sheldon regarding what I believe was at the time, was a I guess a commercial recreation potential outing business, what have you. There was a not an email, but a Facebook page that was sent to me, and so there might be some misunderstanding between a non-commercial recreation activity, which is a permitted use in most all zoning districts with a permit. It appeared from that Facebook page, because the individual was charging, proposing to charge a fee. You know, it sounded like a commercial operation. Since then, Mr. James Sheldon, Jim Sheldon, he and I spoke, clarified that. So a non-commercial recreation is a permitted use. It does require a permit. However, the other condition in the zoning regs is that the property owner or owners need to sign the permit application. So so anyway, I'll get that out tomorrow. So that's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, anybody have any questions for Jonas?
This is Chuck.
Yep.
Questions for Jonas?
Yep.
The permit that you're talking to Keith in regards to, or it's not the Purham weight permit again, is it?
Correct, it is, yes. That's a result of the meetings and the desire by the town according to the town attorney. And and the court, the town attorney, the court, and Mr. Purham's attorney is to resolve the the zoning violation with a new permit application. I believe I sent, there were six attachments to an email. I don't know if you have all the background information? Chuck?
Yeah, I do. And I'm in pretty close contact with one of the individuals.
Okay.
And it was my understanding that the sale to, between Wade to Purham has been called off.
That's correct. On two, I had that confirmed on two different occasions by Merrill Bent.
Okay, so this permit must be for the footage on the building to the right of way, then, I would guess.
It's a private right of way owned by Mr. Purham.
By Mr. Wade?
According, as far as I know, is, and confirmed by Merrill, is that Mr. Purham owns the right of way, and Mr. Wade has access over the right of way.
No.
No. Well, then these documents are incorrect then. And it's worth a third discussion with Merrill Bent.
Okay, so I'm done. Thank you.
I'll speak to Merrill Bent for a third time to find out. If she can confirm that, but you know, these are the, if you go to the stipulated motion for remand, and then talk to Merrill, you know, that's the information I'm getting.
Okay, Ray had a question?
Yes, I do. I've spoken to Ashley. I know that he will not sell that property to Purham. And I also know that there will never be a deal with Purham. Purham should be fined his penalties retroactive to when it started, when he built the building, and forward. He has to be fined. He has to pay the penalties. That's the way our bylaws are written. That's why they're written, and we have to file, we have to follow our bylaws. That's the job of the Select Board. Period. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you for your comment, Ray. Anybody else have any questions for Jonas? Okay, thank you, Jonas.
Okay.
Planning Commission, Jessica?
This is Jessica. I sent my written report to Kristen, who distributed it earlier today, I believe. We had our meeting last night, so it was a very quick turnaround on that report. The Planning Commission is currently working to resolve two matters that we inherited at the time when we had this turnover, and Harry stopped being the chairperson. And I took over. One was the transition from a one acre to a 10 acre town, which I gather has been in process for a very long time, and we hope to wrap up soon. The other one was the Enhanced Energy Plan, which Harry had been working on. So we've spent the last month gathering information about where these two projects currently stand. And here's what we've been able to find. For the 10 acre town designation, we spoke to Ed Boe at Vetland Regional Planning Commission. He says that he and the state do not have the documentation that our 2017 bylaws were properly adopted. And that was included in the subdivision section that is required for us to be a 10 acre town. So these are the bylaws we currently have up on our website. RRPC does not have the documentation on that. Now, the members of the Planning Commission who were on the Planning Commission at the time of that adoption say that, and I mean, there's, I believe, right? I believe it. I wasn't on the Planning Commission at the time, but they say that the warnings were filed correctly, and that the public meetings of the Planning Commission and the Select Board, the public hearings, were held. But somewhere in the process, the documentation has vanished. We are going to spend one more month looking for that documentation. I hope to get Kristen's help with that a little bit, and I do also need to speak to John Thrasher. But if we are unable to find the documentation that that was properly adopted, we're just going to have to go through the adoption process a second time. Which honestly is not that out of the way, because we do need to go through the amendment process anyway to add this school definition that the Planning Commission and the Select Board approved last summer, summer 2019. So either way, we're going to have to either re-adopt the bylaws, or we're going to have to amend the bylaws, and we will. Jonas has gotten us the information about the detailed process that needs to be gone through, so if it has to be done again, we'll be certain to do it right this time. And once that those bylaws are officially adopted, and the Vetland Regional Planning Commission has the documentation, we will then be a 10 acre town. Ed Boe told me there's nothing further that needs to be added to them from where he sits. They look fine. They just need to have the documentation. The second thing that is still in process is the Enhanced Energy Plan. Last November, the Planning Commission approved it, and it was sent to the Select Board who discussed it according to the minutes of the Select Board, I believe in last December. However, that's not the process it needed to go through. The Enhanced Energy Plan needs to be an amendment to the town plan in order for it to be active. And until it's active, we don't have the benefit that that Enhanced Energy Plan gives us, which is having a greater voice in Section 248 energy citing approval process that the state does. So if we want that to be official, we need to stick it in as an appendix to the town plan and go through the amendment process on the town plan. The Planning Commission is going to be discussing the detailed energy, Enhanced Energy Plan at our January meeting. Barbara Noyes-Pulling from RRPC says that it does meet the 14-point checklist that the state has. It looks extremely complete. We might need to just make a couple, like little wording tweaks to it, but it's pretty much ready to go. Harry did a very good job on that. So once we're able to get that adopted, we will have additional clout. Say someone comes in and wants to do a big, a big, you know, wind project or a solar project on a on land that the town doesn't think is suitable, we will then have a greater voice in that if we can get that adopted. That's the main two things that we're working on right now. I hope that we can get both of those sorted out before the end of 2021, and that'll sort of wrap up what we've inherited, and then we can move on to new and exciting things. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, you had a question?
As has been said here already, thank you, you did a very good presentation there. But John Thrasher dropped the ball on this. John Thrasher was supposed to do this years ago, and I've been through this with Bill Burke many times. And that's why Pollock is still a one acre town.
And we're moving forward on that now, Ray, so.
Pardon me?
We're moving forward on that, so that's real news.
It's about time. Thank you very much for your, for a new chairman's input. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Jessica? Guess not. Thank you very much, Jessica. Oh, Kristen?
All right, this is Kristen. Jessica, just, um, I'd be happy to help you out with whatever you might need, so feel free to be in touch with me.
Uh, I will email you.
Okay.
It's just a particular file that we'd be looking for, which some of the planning commission is certain must exist.
Okay.
But it is entirely possible, as Ray pointed out, that the ball was dropped and it might not exist.
Okay.
Hearing, hearing your story of the lost computer, I feel that files going missing is something that has just unfortunately happened over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next, Kristen?
Rhoad Foreman.
Rhoad Foreman. Keith?
Hello?
Hi Keith.
Okay, I didn't submit a written report. Um, I don't think it's a, should be a surprise. Most of what we've been up to. We battled that storm, which is probably as much snow as we've ever had in a brief period of time anyway. Got into some uncharted territory. We even trucked a little snow because we had no place to push it through Polat Village. Um, so and then we had the windstorm and we have been cleaning up trees and that was yesterday and today we just got them out of the road for the holiday and the weekend and we got passage and then we went back this week and, and cleaned things up. Looking like we might have a little more weather, but for the most part, we've got some decent weather coming and we'll be out doing some other things. That's kinda living by the hour some days here, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Keith?
What's the latest on our new Dodge, Keith?
Uh, should take delivery, should take delivery Chuck right after the first of the year. Um, just before Christmas, it was headed for a paint shop and as quick as that was done, there was a few incidentals to finish and then we'll, so I anticipate hearing in the near future that it's ready to be picked up.
Thank you.
Okay. John?
All right, so like, uh, Chuck again, I'd like to comment Keith, uh, that I'm uh pretty impressed with what our town did with thirty-six to forty-two inches of snow. Uh, we had a few issues, but for the most part, I was pretty impressed that we did what we did. Thank you.
Good to hear, Chuck. Thank you.
John, you had a question?
Yeah, it's coming up on the warrants. There was one bill or invoice for chains dash truck and another one for truck chains uh from different vendors. One was the Town of Wells and one was.
Right, okay, Alex, I can explain that. Yes. Dave Ricard got some chains that were the wrong ones. Okay, and he bought them last year and they didn't apply to what he needed, but it's what we use, so we purchased them from the Town of Wells. Cause that I, being a year old, it wasn't something he could swap back in. So, um, we paid them what they paid for them and took delivery of them. And then the other ones were tire chains that we purchased from our normal vendor, which we didn't get everything we normally would have because we got some from the Town of Wells, so. That was, uh, Dave had those change and they, and they weren't anything that he could use, so he contacted me and asked if we were in the market for some and, and we took them, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Keith? No, I guess not. I'd like to, I'd like to also commend you guys too. The, the our roads were just as good as anything I saw all the way to Gramble, so. They're dealing with state and, and county levels were, weren't any better shaped than, than what we were. They were all passable and I was very impressed for what, what you guys had to deal with, so.
Good. It wasn't without, it wasn't without a few, wasn't without a few problems, but we worked through them, so. We did what we could. We had them open by the evening of that day. Everything was open and passable, so.
Yeah, you and your crew did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for commenting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, assessors report. Is there any report from assessors? Kristen?
No, nothing was submitted. I wasn't sure, um, this is Kristen, after the last meeting, if I was supposed to reach out to inquire about beginning to receive reports again, or if John, you were going to do that, so I'm sorry. I, if it was my responsibility, I dropped the ball on that.
No, you didn't, Kristen. I dropped the ball, so there is no report and I will have to talk to Karen about that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Town Clerks Memo, Deb?
Uh, yeah, I didn't submit a memo because I'm here. Um, we're on a little bit of a break right now, although between Sue and I, um, we've done a considerable amount of work during our break. Once we get back, we're gonna be focused on town meeting. Needless to say, there's still some things fluttering around in legislation that will help some towns facilitate town meeting in a safe and effective way. One of them is to allow towns to go to Australian ballot, which doesn't really affect us because we're Australian ballot anyway. We're going to try to send out a postcard inviting people to vote absentee slash early. Um, just to keep the numbers down, uh, cause I'm pretty sure we'll still be dealing with the pandemic leading up to town meeting. We, we came in a couple of times, um, within the last week to facilitate some title searches. Um, one of them was today. I was in for a few hours yesterday. Sue was in for a few hours, so property sales are, are still very, very busy, as I'm sure Jonas could also attest to that because it then kind of prompts people wanting to do things to their homes to make them satisfactory for them. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions, I don't have anything to report. Um, it's, December tends to be a quiet time, other than the, the searches and starting to think about town meeting. Um, again, uh, candidates will only need to submit the consent of candidate form to appear on the ballot. Um, we've made the decision about the appropriation request as of last meeting, so that, that was really a good step forward. So anyway, that's it for me, unless somebody has something they wanna say.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay, Deb, thank you very much. Appreciate you doing it. Ray.
Hello, Michael.
What's that, Ray?
Sorry, uh, Deb, I have a question for you.
Okay.
Uh, what happened with all these postcards you got sent out to everybody in the Town of Polat?
Any response?
From five forty-one Bright Hill Slate Ridge, Daniel Banyer.
Uh, I don't believe that has anything to do with me. Um.
Did you get any, any kind of inquiries from anyone in the Town of Polat about those postcards?
Only one person contacted me.
Okay, only one?
Only one to me. I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but I only had one person.
Okay, that's how, that's how many responses I got also. Thank you, Deb.
Yeah, Jonas has a question.
Go ahead, Jonas.
Just a response that the postcard was forwarded to Merrill Bent, uh, the town attorney.
Thank you, Jonas.
Okay, have a good night, Deb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Treasurer, did Julie join us tonight or not?
This is Kristen. Julie did not join us, but we do have a memo from her and I had forwarded that along to the select board. Would you like for me to read it?
Would you please?
Sure. So the treasurer's memo for December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, there are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was nine thousand three fourteen twenty-five. The total accounts payable was thirty-six eight eighty-five sixteen. Monies from the general fund, twenty thousand two sixteen oh six. Highway nineteen thousand eight sixty-seven sixty-six. Wastewater, six thousand one fifteen sixty-nine. We have received the Vermont LEGR COVID grant in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Thanks to Bob Marlino for helping with this. The second installment of wastewater fees was due on twelve ten twenty-twenty. Below is a breakdown of the collection after two installments. Would you like for me to read through that?
Sure, please.
The select board, oh, yes, Mike?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, wastewater twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one levy ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Adjustment credits nine thirty-eight fifty-four. Adjustment increase none. Collected by treasurer forty-six thousand seven seventy-four twenty-six. Remaining levy fifty-one thousand five thirty-seven twenty. Due to increases in COVID nineteen cases in Vermont and across the USA, we are requiring that tax payments be mailed or dropped off at the town hall in the secure drop box. I will mail back any receipt so that is, so it is important to be aware that there may be some extra postage costs coming up. If people need to pay in cash, they must schedule an appointment twenty-four hours ahead of time. Happy New Year. Respectfully submitted Julie Mack.
Excellent, thank you. So everybody had a chance to look over the warrants?
Um, Michael, in regards to the, uh, Chuck here. In regards to the wastewater, um, rates, forty some odd thousand dollars seems like a lot of, uh,
But it's only the second.
Is there, is there more? Is that just the first one of this fiscal year and the next one comes?
It's the second out of four. It's, it's a half point.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, okay. All right, now I'm, now I remember, okay.
Not, not as, not as bad as it looks.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the warrants? Everyone has a chance to look them over?
This is Chuck again. I would make a motion to, uh, accept the warrants as Julie printed.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
John will second it.
Okay, we have motion made in second. All in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Is there any comments on Julie's message other than Chuck's on her memo? No, okay. Moving right along. What do we got? Emergency management? Anything from Bob Marlino? Nothing. This is second meeting, right? And health officer, nothing? And let's see, next in line would be, what, me?
We, we did get an email, Mike, um, with an update. This is Kristen.
Please read that.
Okay, um, so here are the Polat wastewater treatment facility submission files and the VTEM's updates for November twenty twenty. Future priorities RFQ status. Jill is completing a qual scoring. Replace air valve near, near end of force main from Spruce Gum Pump Station. VTEM's to provide quote. Spruce Gum Pump Station, repair and replace pump number one. VTEM's to provide a quote. Recommend jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. Again, VTEM's to provide quote. Dave Dominico was at the facility on December ninth, performing his state inspection and sent us his inspection report last week. I responded promptly and expect that the facility will receive an acceptable once he acknowledges the documents he requests are received. Please note, you will want to add twenty-two hundred dollars to the sampling budget for the W E T testing in January of twenty twenty-two inside the next fiscal year. I'll forward a copy of the email to you both next, so you have it to review. As always, please let me know if you have any questions. I will respond in the next week with the estimates and RFQ score, scoring noted above. Jill Marsano, owner and president of Vermont Utility Management Services LLC.
Okay, thank you. That, that twenty-two hundred, I think we, we need eleven hundred, but we can probably find that out of the budget that we just approved. I'm hoping. I'll have to talk to Julie about that.
I'm, this is Kristen again, Mike. I am going to, I can't recall if I have already, so I'm going to forward her that email along. Um, and just ask, I can ask her to touch base with you, just to make sure that's been acknowledged.
If that can work. Thank you. And as far as Jill and I haven't got together to talk about the SOQs, so we're, we're working on that to try and come up with, with that. And other than that, I think that initial, initial of response from the visit, Jill said that she felt that Dave Dominico was, was quite happy with, with the progress we're making. He was a, a very strong advocate for us when we were fighting with all the problems. In the beginning, he, he stood up for us with, at a state level to help us to not get as much of prob, in as much problems as we did when the, when the refurbishment went through poorly, so. He's been, he's been a, a good, good help on our side. Any older unfinished business?
Uh, this is Chuck. I guess you probably know the comment I'm gonna lead up to, uh, Route one fifty-three, our town property that we took from a tax sale is still occupied. How much longer are we gonna let that be in effect?
It's not really up to us. We've, we're doing, we're taking every step that we can. And every, every time we take a step, they have so much time to react and then judges are involved and, and they've all been served with papers and it's, it's an all legal process, Chuck, so. And I don't know even how, how the legal process is if it may be winter time, it may be COVID, some of that stuff may have effects on it. It's, it could be dragged out for a long time.
So Chuck here again, who's paying the light bill? Are they?
We're not. Not that I know of. I haven't seen anything come in. Everything, everything would be in their name. So.
Okay.
That's all I can tell you. Hey.
So it's my, my guess is that it's gonna be, uh, well into spring before they're, uh, gonna be evicted.
That's, that's a very good possibility, unfortunately, but it's, our, our hands are tied by, by the courts. We've, we've been.
I hope everybody's keeping track of the expenses, uh.
Yeah.
So that we make darn sure that we collect all expenses when the sale of the property comes up again.
Every, every legal bill that comes in gets billed accordingly to that property, so.
This is Ed. I have, I have a question regarding that same subject. Um, has that ever been inspected by our officer? Has that ever been inspected by our officer and perhaps condemned or approved as living quarters? If that was checked and condemned, that might help our case without throwing a lot more money at it. Or just one more thing to add to the pile.
I don't know, I, I believe that, that that can turn into a real slippery slope too. I think we need to talk to Bob Marlinow about that. Could you write him a quick email, Kristen, and, and copy me on it and we can see and, and we can see if he can answer the questions, Ed, and we can share it.
Okay.
I will do.
This is Frank.
Okay, just a minute, are you all set, Ed, or do you have something else?
Well, I had another question on old business and that, this, um, whatever happened with the speed, speed signs?
No one made a motion to buy them as far as I know.
Well, is that where we, is that where we were at, like?
We had, we had a couple of questions.
This is-
Kristen, go ahead please.
Um, Ed, if my memory is serving correctly, and I'm just doing a quick scan, and I think maybe Jonas, um, has left the meeting, but there is a potential that I believe some of the, uh, the costs could be grant funded potentially. And I believe that it's a grant that might be coming up in the next few months perhaps, so. Last I recall, Jonas had recommended that we look into that before spending all of the money outright on them. But I will follow up on that and add that to next meeting's agenda if you'd like.
Um, yeah, okay. Um, and I just questioned if there would be, if we buy them outright, I would look at the cost between that and renting. I mean, it's just gonna be something more for us to keep up, something to store, something to, but anyhow, just, just a comment.
Okay.
Perhaps, this is Kristen one more time, perhaps we could reach out to the Manchester, um, Select Board as well, as I know they have the speeds, the same speed signs. And just inquire with them about their experiences with them so far, if they feel that it's been a worthy investment.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Frank.
Okay Frank, what's your question?
On the property Chuck was talking about, who would be responsible for ongoing sewer fees on that property?
The property owner. And that'll get all balled up into the, the, when we sell the property, that, all the, the fees will, will be a part of that sale.
The question is the town is the owner. And does the town budget pay into the sewer budget, the sewer fee?
Now they'll probably just show up as the delinquent and when the, when the property gets sold, the money will get dispersed. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on the new business, or, or, older unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay Ray.
I wanna know when the listers are gonna go to 541 Briar Hill Road and assess that property. That property, uh, just recently, Banyer boasted that he had $1.6 million invested in that property. And we're charging him for like $79,000 or 70 something thousand dollars a year on taxes. Then he put in a, a garage apartment after that. Uh, and I wanna know when in the hell the listers are gonna do their job and assess that property properly. They should add a couple hundred thousand dollars onto his bill right now, send it to him and let him grieve it. And then we will have the right to go on that property and see what's there.
Thank you for your comment Ray.
It's a demand, it's not a comment Mike, it's a demand.
It's a comment Ray, you understand what's going on with that property.
I know more about it than you do.
We know more about it than you Mike.
He cut, he cut me. Um, this is Ed. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, I kind of agree with Ray, I do not see, as far as I know, our listers do not have to inspect the property. If you're not allowed access to the house or property, then you can put a fair assessment on that property. He has stated in the paper, he has 1.6 million in it.
Put me back on.
You're on.
Am I, am I back on here Mike?
You're on Ray.
Okay, that's my point.
Calm down.
I'm-
You've made your point Ray. You've made your point.
Something be done. When will the listers go there?
There is a process going on right now Ray. We're working on it.
For the last three years Mike.
Ray, there's a lot that we don't have any control over.
That we do though, we do have a, a, a control over his assessment. I know that because I was a lister. I know that because Tom Collard was a lister. And we've been through this before with people that would not let us go on their property. And we just give them a, a number and let them grieve it. That's my point.
Okay, you've made your point. What else do we got Kristen?
Nothing further from older unfinished business.
What about the energy coordinator? Anybody, anybody want that job? Besides Frank?
That nobody else has applied for it yet, and I think at the last meeting, they had kind of, they being Frank, had sort of discussed and initiated and kind of stated that the energy coordinator role is something that at this moment in time is sort of balled up with the Planning Commission. Um, and that it was something that didn't necessarily need to be jumped upon right at this moment. But that was as of two weeks ago. So that is the only other update on that. I'm sure that status has changed from the side of the Planning Commission. Um, but that's, that's all that I have for you on that topic.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to new business?
Yes, and so, um, Kristen again, the Select Board had received a couple of emails that I had forwarded along to you guys. One of which is from a resident on, I believe it's Towsley Hill Road. And wanting for some clarification regarding the approved ATV route. Um, I know that this had been discussed several months ago. Um, and you'll see in the content of the email that there's just some concerns regarding time of travel, there's no plates, people aren't wearing helmets, they're being, you know, perhaps a little bit noisy and in, inconsiderate, um, from, from a certain point of view, so. My hope was that I could either get some guidance from you folks on what to say, or if one of the selectmen would like to respond, I know that that route is, you know, that is an approved route by the town because it's connecting the pre-established trails. But I'm sure of whether or not we can, I know the last time this was brought up, we had stated that folks who were concerned could contact the state because the town doesn't really have the opportunity to enforce it, it's more of a state concern. So just looking for a little bit of guidance from you guys on how we'd like to go about responding to those, to those folks.
Chuck, go ahead.
Okay, um, I've read the, uh, comments that we just got. Um, we, we made the ATVs available from Fred Stone's property to the gate on the telescope, uh, access road, up, uh, Herrick Brook Road.
Off McCornet's.
Now, I'm thinking maybe we need to relook at that and put times that they can use that access. And when it's, well, I mean, I, I'm just considering, do we want to put times that these ATVs can travel that section of road that we have permitted for ATV use? And therefore, if we did that, these other people that are just messing around, uh, on their four wheelers and whatever, all hours of the early evening, late evening, that's what's irritating these, uh, these people. But I don't know how we can, I don't believe we can do anything about the town giving access from Stones to Telescope Gate access. So what's the other board's opinion on that?
Uh, this is Ed. I know other towns, um, have like hours of operation. So they're not allowed to operate in the middle of the night. There's also speed limits posted, so they can be enforced. Um, I believe ve, all vehicles are supposed to be registered. And I believe helmets, uh, worn. So. But anyhow, that's, I see no problem with posting hours and speed limit, and then maybe that can be, um, our constable or whatever could, if called, of course it's, you know, they're there and then they're gone, but anyhow, that, uh, just a, just a little thought, um.
Right. Thank you.
Personally, personally, if it was me and I was over there, or if I had a problem here, I would put out a game camera, I would get them on film or whatever, on camera, as to who it is, what they're doing, and go from there. Those game cameras are great.
Well, they, they sent a picture, they had a picture, I mean, it's clearly an unregistered motor vehicle, whether we said it was okay on the road or not, they all have to be registered.
They all have to be-
They all had to be, they had to be a member of the club, in order to be on that road. So if, if they're not, if they're not pertaining to all of the rules, then, then they're illegal, just like a car speeding, um, needing to call the cops. Ray, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, uh, wonder, are we gonna start to enforce our, our bylaws, is that what you're saying now Mike? Because if we're gonna do it for this, for this, uh, for these RTVs or RVs or whatever the hell they are, uh, snowmobiles, uh, what about 541 Briar Hill Road where we have a business running in a residential area, totally inappropriate and totally illegal in the town of Polat because it's a, a shooting range of, is not a permitted use in the town of Polat according to our bylaws? Are we gonna all of a sudden start enforcing our bylaws, is that what you're saying to me tonight?
Thank you for your comment Ray. Anybody else have any questions on this, uh?
What's the answer Mike, did you answer my question? Answer my question.
I don't need to answer your question Ray.
You did not answer my question, you're the chair of the Select Board Mike.
I don't have to answer your question Ray. Ray, keep your points to the meeting, otherwise we'll remove you from the meeting.
Well, there you go.
Oh my God, what a puss.
Your mother.
Anybody else have any comments about the four wheelers?
Yeah, so, so who are we, can I give them maybe some suggestions, should I suggest that they call 911 for these situations or?
They will not come. They will-
We would have to-
Well, I'm, I'm actually, so I'm addressing my question to Mike, I'm just trying to talk about-
Thank you Christian, but I'll tell Mike, they will not come. Period.
Ray?
This isn't-
Look at, if you wanna be a part of this meeting, please be respectable, otherwise, please leave.
Respectable as possible, I have not said anything that was not true Michael, and they will not-
We need to stay on point.
I am on point.
We need to stay on point, there's a lot of things that we have going on, not just-
If you call 911, they will not come.
Okay, so perhaps we'll-
Made your point.
Talk about this another time. I don't have anything further for new business.
Okay. Uh, anything for the good of, uh, any public comment?
I think Ken had his hand raised.
All my comment on the four wheelers is, if you're gonna, um, ask the constables to enforce it, you're gonna have to buy them a four wheeler to maybe catch them. You know, cause they rip and tear, they rip and tear here, we don't do anything about it. They come up the rail trail, they come up the switch road summertime, they haven't been out this much this year yet. But you can't do anything about it, cause they're going by at 60 miles an hour at nighttime. So, just a comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Ken.
Thank you Ken.
Welcome.
Anybody else have any public comment?
This is Frank.
Go ahead Frank.
Uh, meeting last night, I brought up the idea-
He's here.
Purchasing an IR camera and storing it at the library that Jessica may be checking on, if the library wants to be on board with that, with a cooperative group. Um, so the citizens can go out and borrow the camera from the library for a day or two. And go out and do a picture of their house to check on energy loss. And, uh, one of the things that we did a number of years ago is I went, Ronnie Taylor and a bunch of fire department guys, we went around West Polat with the black and white IR camera off one of the trucks on a drill night. And we took pictures of all these houses up and down all the streets of West Polat, and every, every one of them was leaking heat through the walls like there was no tomorrow. And just it would be something-
How much is one of them cameras Frank?
I think Jessica might have said this, that-
Frank, how much is a camera?
Range of prices, no more than a thousand's, no more than a thousand dollars, I was wondering if there's a budget item for the energy group at all.
I don't believe so.
Energy use.
I wonder-
John?
This is John, I wonder whether Neighbor Works or their heat squad or whatever has made that available on regular audits or what have you.
I, I don't know, but that's a good place to check Frank, why don't you check with one of them and see, see how that is? It's interesting to look at that, but if you don't understand what you're looking at, it's not gonna be very effective.
I, I've discussed with Neighbor Works, Neighbor Works before. And it's usually a process of around a hundred dollar fee to get them initially involved with an assessment. Um, but I can double check, that was a year or two ago that, you know, two years ago that I checked with them. And some of the contractors are involved with this, we're looking to do it when they charge a fee and then there's an energy consultation that occurs with the potential for doing contracting work as well. But I don't know if there was a totally free, easy to use, easy to access camera that would be available that anybody in town could just check out, and I'll, I'll check up on it and get back to you at the next meeting.
Why don't you get some more information Frank, thank you.
Yeah, I will, I'll do that, thank you.
Appreciate it. Does anybody else have any public comment?
Yes Mike, I'd like to speak sometime, if possible.
Okay Jim, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanna speak on behalf of Jonas and also, um, speaking with, uh, some of the board members. Um, I spoke, uh, earlier, you know, with this COVID going on and everything and happening, and I know that, uh, down here at our property, um, we've held, uh, previous events such as, uh, snowmobile races and so on and so forth. And, um, I know I spoke with Bob Jones, um, over the summertime. And with, uh, COVID going on, it seems like a lot of facilities that are, uh, like say fairgrounds and whatnot, and I think you probably can contest to this, that, um, these places are not allowing for events. Um, I was looking to ask the board to see if they would be interested- Um, I was looking to ask the board to see if they would be interested after speaking with the, uh, fire department, uh, upon their looking for donations and shutting down some of their events, that, uh, we'd be able to, uh, hold, uh, a public event for, say, a snow cross race over the summertime, over the wintertime, sorry. And, uh, I was looking to see if there was any possible way that, uh, the board would be interested in voting on something like that, uh, to have, have such a thing.
Okay, that's something we'd have to have more discussion with Jonas about to see how every, make sure all the details could be covered. That would be something you'd be willing to do with the fire departments, would get the benefit of it?
Yes, that's right. I, I spoke with the, um, with the fire department myself, and, um, they seemed very happy and enthused that somebody was looking out to hold an event. And, uh, based upon Jonas's comments that he had here, um, about what is taking place, I just wanna clarify that, um, what's going on down here right now is recreational use, and the only, uh, funds that are taken are donation funds. And, um, the, the race that I'm asking for right now would be for, to help benefit the town. Yeah, I, I mean, the fire department. Sorry about that. If that, if that was something that the town was interested in, I think a lot of you folks, I know you probably can remember back having some races down here, I think, right?
Yeah, benefits for the fire department are always valuable, but it, there's, there's a lot of details that have to be hammered out. We'll have to do some more discussions with Jonas and see, uh, to make sure, and then have to check in with the state level for events and stuff like that with all their restrictions. So, well, thank you for that comment and that, that, uh, option. So we'll do some more research and, and be in touch.
What would be the, would be the way to get back in touch with you? Would it be to come to another meeting? Is that what would be the way to do that?
Probably that would be your best, that would be your best, uh, the best way, or we can send, we can send you some information. I think Jonas has, has some contact information. He would be your point person on that.
Oh, I've spoke, I spoke with Jonas, and, um, I spoke with him about it, about the activity that he was speaking with. And, uh, he was gonna get back to me with some other information, but he did not see where, I was not non-conforming to what the bylaws were.
Okay.
And the only reason I'm speaking with you is I was looking to add to it. Okay, go ahead, Chuck.
Okay.
Uh, Jim, Jim, this is Chuck Whedon. The question I think Jonas mentioned to you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you need to, apply for a permit, I believe, the way Jonas was saying. Was he gonna get you that, uh, permit for you to fill out, or what was the process?
I do believe that he was gonna get ahold of me, 'cause I told him there's two issues. The one issue was that I was looking to see if we could do an event to help the town. And then the other one was the issue that he brought up in his minutes that I, we spoke of about and that I was conforming to. In those, as far as a recreational, uh, use was a permitted use, and that a donation was not, uh, unpermitted use for that, for what I was doing right now, for my kids and their friends to ride around on my home property. But, uh, but to make it clear, I did speak with, uh, the fire department on a separate issue, which was to actually hold an event that would help benefit the fire department on their looking for donation work. And that was being spoke of, I, I've mentioned it to Bob Jones, uh, he can contest, uh, many months ago, before actually bringing this to light today.
Okay, well, there's more research we'll have to do on our side before and, and see what, what happens. So I'll, I'll reach out to Jonas, uh, and, uh, see if we can come up with a, find out if we can conform with all the, all the current rules for, for an event that would be a, other than just a fun, family-type event, that would be a, a fundraising event.
Okay, 'cause I, I just, we did look into the fact that with the area that we had, that we could meet the state guidelines, um, as far as COVID restrictions went. I know I did look into that, and, uh, but I, I thank you anyways for, uh, for, uh, entertaining this, and I hope we can help the community with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to, uh, offer tonight? Okay. Ed?
This is Ed. I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
John will second that motion. All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Chuck? Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, good night, everyone.